We do not have any presentations this evening. We will go to public comment one note regarding new business item number two on the Center and Main Intersection Improvement. If anyone wants to speak on that item, we will take comments during the item presentation because it'll be some discussion between now and then. I just want to make sure that everyone's comments are fresh when we get to that point. So, we do have time allotted on the agenda. If you wish to speak on an item that does not appear on the agenda, that is not item number two, or is not part of a public hearing. That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, three, four, and five.
How would council like to proceed with items one and two?
I move we approve consent agenda items one and two.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second. Tomorrow that we approve consent items two and two. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda item number three. Consider authorizing payment to the Gardner Area Chamber of Commerce for a continual facilitation of positive business climate and promotion of economic development in Gardner.
I just had some questions. Usually we have a presentation about what the, where the money goes and what they do with it. Is that not the case anymore? Last year, I think they, we got a presentation out of it, or?
Well, during budget, we had it.
No, we didn't. I mean, we kind of went over it quickly, but they were going to bring a income and expense report, find, show us what, all they've done. No, nobody?
No.
I mean, I do have a few questions.
Steve, if you can forward, please.
Mr.?
What, how much money do you operate with in addition to the money that the City of Gardner gives you?
Our budget's roughly 106,000 a year.
And where does the rest of that money come from?
Members.
So, the bulk of it comes from members?
Correct.
And what, who are the biggest contributors?
From members?
Right.
Large corporations.
Such as?
Such as large corporations. Our sponsors, TradeNet, CenturyLink, Price Chopper, BNSF.
And how much does BNSF give?
The same as the others. It's $5,000.
And where does the bulk of the money go? I mean, is it small business support?
Do you want me to read you a list of all the activities we're involved with? One moment. We do coffees, after-hours, ribbon cuttings, publish Experience Gardener, business appreciation lunch with the EDC, new resident bags, maps, rental reference guides, church, club, and organization guides. We host joint chamber mixers. We're involved with a Fourth of July event, the Johnson County Fair Parade, Festival on the Trails, events taking place out at the fairgrounds, citywide garage sale, our website. We receive phone calls in our office for new businesses, or for existing businesses. We promote marketing opportunities within our office. We sponsored the Moonlight Madness event for last year, the Think Local First campaign. We advertise in My U.S. Network. We're a phone book drop location. We provide relocation packets for new residents. We also work with Small Business Economic Development. We're the voice of Gardner on the Johnson County President's Council. We're also a member of the Johnson County Public Policy Legislative Council.
So, in terms of economic development, which successes can you point to this year?
Which successes? Well, I think we were pretty instrumental in getting the three coffee houses. We worked with all the small businesses downtown trying to fill the existing spaces.
And so, the three coffee houses came at the same time, and no one, I mean, they weren't worried about competition?
That's not for me to make that decision. I mean, they have to be able to make their own decisions, and they happened to all come in at the same time.
Okay. That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
How would council like to proceed with consent agenda item number three?
I move we approve consent item number three. Second.
Motion Broxteman, second tomorrow that we approve consent item number three. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Consent agenda item number four. Consider authorization of the 2012 payment to the Southwest Johnson County Economic Development Corporation.
Same questions, really?
Well, if I remember the questions in order, our budget's about 280,000. Our largest contributor is the Air Center. They pay us a fee to represent them in economic development. They also pay us, or they have an expenditure that goes through our budget for advertising. You may have noticed in the Business Journal, the Kansas City Business Magazine, those type publications. We also have agreements with City of Gardner and the City of Edgerton to, for economic development services. And over the last year, some of the things, and we also have a private membership. Our largest private membership is 2,500. We, I don't have that list right here in front of me, but it is people like KCPL, BNSF, the TradeNet. We have just other businesses. We have three categories, or four categories, $400, $600, $1,250, and 2,500. What do we do with the money? We promote Southwest Johnson County. And we do things such as maintain contact with the economic development community, whether that be KC, ADC, Smartport, the State of Kansas. We maintain contact with the brokerage community through groups such as CCIM, SIOR. There's a number of trade groups. We participate in a lot of those. We do some trade shows with other groups. We just came back from RILA, which is Retail Industry Leaders Conference. And we identify potential prospects for this area. We work with developers that might want to come into this area and develop land, or to purchase businesses. Let's see. We also, one of our responsibilities as far as agreement with the city is that if a prospect comes in, we facilitate the development of the cost benefit analysis for any tax abatement. We don't, I don't do the calculation. It's based on a formula that was established by the University of Kansas and Kansas State quite a few years ago. The Board of Tax Appeals accepts that study, and the, there's a person at Department of Commerce that actually does the calculations for us. Then we make the presentation of the results. What else would you like to?
So, how do you, when you represent somebody, how many clients do you have then? What'd you say?
Clients.
Well, I mean, contributors.
Well, we have the cities, the Air Center, and then we have, on the private sector side, about 100 businesses. And how do we represent them?
Well, I mean, how do you, you know, divide the interest up from the 25,000, I think it was, that we, we give you versus the collective majority of the money that they give you?
Well, our job is to represent Southwest Johnson County. And we, if we have a prospect that would come in, we identify what their requirements are, find the proper site, or building, or whatever they're looking for. Then we help facilitate them moving into the area. We, we try to get them to make a decision. They might come in from the state, and the state's, excuse me, the state says they're looking for a, an example is the Superior Grain out here at the New Century. They came in, they had specific needs. We showed them property that fit that specific need, and they looked at those options, took the options away that they felt didn't suit, and decided that the site out at the Air Center was the one that, that will work. Then, it's our job to help them move through that process, whether it be the City of Gardner, City of Edgerton, or the county, in the case of the airport. And then, we don't just leave them, you know, over the course of years, when businesses have come in, we'll all maintain contact with those businesses. And there's one that I can't mention right now, but had lunch with them, and they are thinking of expanding. And so, what we do is, what I try to do is help them expand. Now, if the site is in Gardner, I'll work just as hard as if the site is on the Air Center.
Okay. So, what's the biggest success story then for 2011?
Probably.
Economic development wise?
The 1A Auto, which is an aftermarket parts distribution facility that came out of Massachusetts. They have 54,000 square feet right now. They're probably, we're hoping that they expand in this area. And then, we have a couple of companies that are going to distribute grain back to China once the intermodal is complete. And then, we have a couple of others, as I mentioned, that indicate that they are willing to expand, or going to expand, so we've started the process.
Okay. All ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. How would council like to proceed with consent item number four?
I move we approve consent item number four. Second.
Motion Marrow, second Broxteman, that we approve consent item number four. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Consent agenda item number five. Consider authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for an area plan for the Southwest Johnson County Freight District with KDOT, Mark, Johnson County, and Edgerton.
I really just wanted to vote on that separately, so.
Oh, okay. How would council like to proceed with item number five?
I move we authorize item number five.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Broxteman, that we approve consent item number five. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. New business item number one. Consider authorizing the mayor to execute a contract extension with Michael B. Press for consulting services as interim city administrator from April 1st to June 30th, 2012. We are in the process of identifying candidates for permanent position for city administrator. In that process, we, in my view, need to continue utilizing Mike's services. So, that's what the proposal is here before you tonight.
So, how much longer will that process take? City administrator candidate?
Well, we hope to have a decision made in early May, I think is the timeline that we're shooting for right now.
Where are we at in the process right now? Just for an update?
We have got resumes in. We closed the.
That's been closed.
Bidding process, or the application process. Mike and Mary have moved the candidates into three groupings. Chris, Christie, and myself in the process of reviewing those. We've established a plan on moving forward, identifying candidates for phone interviews, and then narrowing to face-to-face, and then bringing finalists forward to the whole council in public for presentation and questions. Very similar to what we did last time with regard to interviews by staff and the public, although we talked briefly that it may be better to have the candidates sit here, be interviewed in that public forum by council, and then allow a public panel to direct questions to them, and then anyone else in the public who wishes to sit in may do so. So, that's the, that's where we're at in the process right now. So, we should be through resume review by the end of this week, my goal, and identifying candidates for phone.
And when will the, the council be involved in that decision? About what date?
The, is it April 30th? What was the target for the public meeting? That was April 30th, right?
No, I thought it was the week before.
Was it the week before? Okay.
Yeah, like the 20, 23rd, April 23rd, Monday.
Which, and we don't have a meeting that day, right?
We don't have a meeting.
Yeah, we have a meeting on the 16th.
Right.
So, we lived up to 23rd.
Okay. So, regarding the business item.
Do you feel comfortable having everything done by June 30th? And the reason I ask is I'd rather give an extra month to this, rather than having to revisit it again at the end of June?
I, well, assuming that candidates identified from the grouping that meets our needs and we meet their needs, then I think we should be able to have them done. The only discussion that, that we had, Mike and I had, as far as a brief period for transition, when a person comes in, because it just depends on what their notice requirements would be, and the current order, and where they're from, and so on. But I don't anticipate that it would be a problem. The goal is to have someone here as close to budget, start a budget, you know, with a real review time as, as we can. I don't know that we can hit it that early, but that would be the goal.
Good.
Why is this process taking so long? I mean, Mike's tenure was supposed to end on March 30th, and the whole reason he was brought in was to serve until someone else did. What does make it take so long?
Some others. Process review. We're doing it internally. So, it takes a while for folks to apply.
And is the addendum that you submitted to us, is that part of this contract again?
Yeah. This is an extension of the existing agreement.
We never really voted on that. Is everyone okay with that addendum?
It was fine when I got it.
Okay. How would council like to proceed?
I move we authorize the mayor to execute a contract extension with Michael B. Press for consulting services as interim city administrator from April 1st, 2012 to June 30th, 2012.
Second.
Motion Broxteman, second Harrison, that we authorize the mayor to execute a contract extension with Michael B. Press for consulting services as the interim city administrator from April 1, 2012 to June 30, 2012. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. New business item number two. Consider options for the final design of Center and Main Intersection Improvements Project, and authorize staff to proceed with the recommended alternative. We'll have a brief summary presentation by Tim, and then open up the floor to, for questions and comments.
Yeah, the purpose, we just want to revisit what basically we showed everybody in the January work session on the options. The options have not changed since that time, but really, I think the things we want to accomplish tonight are give the public an opportunity to speak to council here tonight, and then hopefully, when we're all done, we'll have a direct recommendation from council on how to proceed with the project. Just very briefly, just to refresh your memories, go over the options. Trans Systems, our consultant, came up with three options for the project. The one you're looking at now, option one, was the option to, really was the prime engineering option. We tried to maximize capacity improvements and safety improvements without a whole lot of regard for what we're, how we're affecting adjacent properties. That included left turn lanes on each leg, and a westbound right turn lane. The option two is basically the opposite end of the spectrum. Trans Systems looked at, okay, what, if we really look at, you know, how do we minimize our effect on adjacent properties and still try to make some improvements? That, that was basically how option two came about. Option two, shortened the left turn lanes, kept them at each leg, but eliminated the westbound right turn lane. And this option eliminated parking on the north side of Main Street between Center and Elm. So, from there, we came to option three, which essentially, we tried to balance the needs and find, compromise between one and two. So, in this case, again, the left turn lanes are all in place. The westbound right turn lane was added back in. But I should say, the left turn lanes were also shortened somewhat to mitigate the effect on adjacent properties. Now, this option 3A was one that, this option was, eliminates most of the parking on the south side. So, 3A, actually, there's four spots. If you look just west of Elm, on the south side of the street, it kept four existing parking spaces. The rest of the parking spaces would be eliminated with that option. So, through our talks with business owners and a lot of people in downtown area, that was a big concern. So, we looked at, you know, how can we improve that? So, option 3B was the result of that. And by shortening the westbound left turn lane, we were able to add in two additional parking spots. Now, this was the option that the Trans Systems recommended. City staff approved that recommendation, as did KDOT. And that's what we presented to you as our recommendation in January, and council agreed that that was the appropriate option to proceed with. Since that time, we've had two public information meetings, and lots of calls, and then talking with individuals. And there've been a lot of concerns about the project itself, a lot of concerns also, just in general, with the downtown area. And that's really kind of what's driven us to be here tonight, to air this, and really, you know, have a feel for where we need to go for sure in the future. So, with that, that's a brief summary. If you guys have any questions you need answered before we turn it over for, for citizens, I'd be happy to, Todd, from Trans Systems is here as well, to, if you need us to.
Tim, I have a question.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to attend the last informational meeting. I understand that 13 citizens or business owners attended, and a number of them were, some of them voiced some concerns. I'm wondering if you could recap that for us a little bit, and, and give us an idea of what those concerns were, and whether or not they feel like they're being addressed?
Um, gosh. One of the concerns has been speed. And we've, we've been working with KDOT and trying to reduce the speed west of Center. And we've done our own speed study and submitted that to KDOT. One of the meetings we had, Senator Olson attended, and he actually requested KDOT to perform a speed study. So, in the next few weeks, KDOT has agreed to come out, and they're actually going to study all of U.S. 56 through Gardner, which has been done just a couple of years ago. But they're going to look at that again, and see if the numbers justify lowering the speed limit. Quite frankly, we had, we had some questions about the parking. I mean, that's always been a concern, that downtown businesses feel like they need all the parking they can get down here. We didn't spend a lot of time talking about that. Todd, feel free to help me out.
What about access to both the banks?
Yeah, access to both the banks will remain the same. There's been concern about, with the increased traffic, is that going to affect it? And certainly, it's going to affect all the businesses downtown. When you look at 2040 traffic, I think the thing, the key to remember here, though, is that the traffic is not being drawn by the project. The project is helping to mitigate issues with future traffic. But the project's not, it's not substantial enough to completely take care of 2040 traffic. We're, we're doing the best we can with what we got to work with down here.
How are we coming with options for the garage entrance for the funeral home on 56?
We've had an architect working on that, and he is, today, he came up with a solution that we think is workable. And, and we've got a meeting set up. Our first meeting to begin negotiations with the Bruce Family Funeral Home will start tomorrow.
I have the same question. Is it, I, I was curious if it's appropriate for us to kind of give the action to move forward without that meeting taking place? And if that was one of the big discussion points the last time we went, was how will they be accommodated? If that's not been solved, and if it's still up in the air in the negotiations, are we going to have a different resolution that we might be spinning our wheels a little bit by trying to take a directive right now?
The problem is, we, we really need to know which design we're going with to figure out what the effect on that property is. I'm confident, you know, that the solution that our architect has come up with is workable. You know, obviously, there's, there'll be some negotiation to get to a final answer. But I think it's in the best, in benefit for the city and then to remove the driveway they currently have to that garage. I mean, that could be, they don't have to stop and back into that garage as they do now. They'll be able to, to access to the west and, and back into their garage from that direction. So, you know, if we end up not being able to come to a solution, that, I think it was with that property, at some point, we'll have to look, well, what can we do design-wise to, you know, kind of design our way out of that issue? And Todd, do you have any thing, design-wise, to add to that?
I think you've kind of covered that, Tim. And I think, based on what we've seen so far, we're fairly comfortable that we can make some design changes that would benefit that property in terms of being able to make that access work. It's just a matter of working out those details with the property, to come to a solution that they're agreeable with as well. Trucks was another thing that was commonly brought up.
Yes, yeah. The level of trucks was certainly concerned by everybody in the area. And the truck, truck volume will go up. The, that's really just a function of the increased traffic.
I'd say that has nothing to do with this project. Truck traffic's going to go up whether we do this or not.
Right, right.
Are we going to be able to incorporate some slow-type measures for truck traffic? Whether that might be, you know, no left turn truck lanes, so to speak? Because I know right here, if you're trying to turn left, the truck can't if there's traffic there. And cars can get pinched underneath if they don't have room to back out. Can we, is that Can we... is that phase two, once it's in place? Or is that something we discuss now and see if we can, you know, signage can just create where trucks... If you're coming through on this road in your truck, you're going straight through. There is no turning, there is no other pieces, which would, I think, take a little bit out of play. But I don't know how much we can do in that regard.
Well, there's two things that are in play that make it difficult. First of all, it's US 56, state highway. So we can't... we have no control over that. And quite frankly, I mean, you're not going to be able to restrict truck traffic on state highway. Also, there's very few truck routes within the city. Not even addressing trucks going through the city, you still have to have a way for trucks locally to get around within the city. Well, Center is also a truck route. We've batted that around a little bit because, I mean, it's... we're concerned about it because you can't completely eliminate that issue, even with the improvements. We just don't have enough room to do that. I mean, one thing we've talked about is, do we eliminate this right turn, westbound right turn out here and just say, no trucks allowed to do that? That might be one that we could figure out how to reroute trucks. But, yeah, just with the limited number of truck routes we have, it's difficult to do.
Challenge we have is that there's industrial-owned properties north of Main on Center. So, you know, they're still going to have to get deliveries and so on. So we've got to... and then we do have industrial properties south on Center as well. But it's a lot easier access than to come in from I-35, obviously, if that's the route they choose. But that's, you know, that's one of the issues. Now, the one conversation did come up about trucks, when the number of trucks... The classification of truck is not 18-wheeler. The classification of truck is box truck and up, I believe, is what the... so UPS deliveries and so on.
Correct, yeah. It's more along the line of what we call heavy vehicles, which includes the 18-wheelers, the big 59-and-a-half-foot trailers on down to the little small single delivery trailers that they come through town, as well as some larger UPS and other delivery vehicles, FedEx type trucks. Those kind of things get classified as the heavy vehicles. So it's not all semis, like you said, there.
So are semis allowed, then?
Yes, they are.
So what is the distinction between those trucks and the semis? What did you mean by that?
That goes to the volume.
There was, yeah, there was concern that it was... that the volume, in the discussion of what was going on in that meeting, that the volume of trucks was tied to 18-wheelers as opposed to what the definition of truck was in the traffic number. So it was not, you know, the turn issues really associated with 18-wheelers being able to make those turns. But the number of trucks coming through this intersection include 18-wheelers as well as local delivery box trucks, Nebraska, Phoenix, Marquette, those kind of things.
The context that came up in was, we currently have about 300 trucks per day going through the intersection on Main Street. And in the 2040 projections, that was projected to go up to about 1,200 trucks per day. And the context then was, that's not all necessarily the big long 59-and-a-half-foot trucks. That's all types of different trucks going through that area.
Do you know how many of them are, semis?
No, we typically don't break it out to that level of detail. Just as a point of reference, the intermodal facility is probably going to generate about an additional 500 trucks through this intersection in the 2040 counts of the projections that we've done through there. So the rest of those 1,200 would all be local type delivery trucks who would come just because of development on the western part of town, southern part of town, and through this area as we develop the city. That's where that truck traffic would be coming from.
And the vehicular traffic, was it 37,000 for that number? I can't remember.
Depends on where you look. It's higher east of Elm than it is west of Elm.
I thought it was like Waverly to Center was 37,000 and then it increased.
Currently, it's about 9,000 in that ballpark. And it'll go up to 30,000 on the west side of Center and about 39,000 on the east side of Center when we get to that 2030, 2040 timeframe. And again, that's predicated on reasonable growth rates. And obviously, that hasn't taken place as dramatically as we'd like in the last few years. But assuming we get back to a normal growth pattern, that's the kind of traffic generation we would expect over the next 20 to 30 years.
I think it's worth mentioning, too, just the percent traffic is actually fairly small. Because typically, what we do, we'd say, you've got, okay, X amount of traffic and then trucks is 3%. 3% is kind of a good ballpark number on top of less.
We're right at 3.
We're in 3.
We're right at 3.
So it's not out of the ordinary. Even though 1,200 is definitely a big increase based on total traffic, it's not out of the ordinary at all.
What information will you use to make the determination on speeds, lowering speeds?
Well, the engineering method is to determine what the 85th percentile speed is. And essentially, that means you've got 85... you just... all you do is monitor the speeds going through. And that... you're looking for the number that 85% of vehicles are all traveling at or below. And that's typically where you like to sign it. So there's not a difference between what people are feeling like they need to drive it versus what it's signed. So in the study we did, the 85 percentile came out at about 35, 36 miles an hour just west of Center. So based on that number alone, we can't say, well, we want it at 30, which is kind of why we're at a point where it's gotten into more of a political process of trying to get that speed lower.
I got a technical question about that and I'll get other questions as well. But, you know, it's 40 miles an hour west of Center heading out of town. And it's 40 miles an hour west of Center heading into town. And does it have to be matching speed limits on both sides of the road? I mean, because I think where the major concern is, is for the eastbound traffic approaching Center, coming in at 40 miles an hour after having been just, you know, a mile, mile and a half up the road doing 60 miles an hour on 56. I think that people are concerned that they're not slowing down quite enough before they get to the intersection. They're having to...
Right, I agree.
You know, let that break or take evasive action because they're going too fast through the area.
Typically, you want opposing traffic to be going relatively to the same speed. And Larry, I'm sorry, I need to correct myself because I think I said 35 or 36. It's actually 41 out there. And we're looking to get down around 35. So there's a little bit of a difference between that. 85% on where we would like to be at.
But don't most people travel, you know, at or above the speed limit? I mean, won't that number always go up until people are so far out of control that they, you know, slow down to what is safe? See what I'm saying? I mean, if the speed limit is 35 and 85% of the people's speed, does that mean you automatically raise the speed to the next five mile per hour increment? And how would it go down? I mean, if the speed limit is 40... you said 40 now? Oh, it's 40, right?
40.
And people, I mean, don't normally travel at less than the speed limit. How would it go down?
Well, I'm not sure if I understand your question. I think you... if I understand it, you have a good point, is you can't really completely control speed just by signs.
Well, I mean, isn't it a natural progression to always increase? I mean, if... I mean...
I don't think so. And I'm certainly no expert in all the science behind it. Typically, more traffic will also tend to lower speeds as well. I mean, there's a lot of different factors involved in it.
But, I mean, I think to Larry's point, if you have a posted speed limit, I'm assuming that at least 85% of the people are going to be going about that posted speed limit. So doing a speed study, to me, doesn't make any sense. When the speed limit's posted out there, I mean, you're studying, are people basically following what they... I mean, because it's just like a school zone. I mean, that's like saying, okay, we're going to go out and do a speed... You post the speed limit at 25, not because you care what the drivers are doing, but what you care about is happening in the area. So I guess I don't understand that.
Well, plus, a perfect example is Gardner Road. I mean, last year, it was 40 miles per hour. And then you did the study, or maybe not you, but it was, I don't know if it was Celia or David Green did the study and it ended up being that 85% of the people traveled at 45 miles per hour. Well, I bet if you went back and did the study now, you'd find that 50 miles per hour is the 85th percentile. I mean, people just naturally... and of course, you add to that, making it a truck route, which happened before the speed limit changed, as I recall. I mean, it just seems like, you know, it kind of let in.
Well, I kind of want to... when we're talking about US 56, I mean, I realize that it's a state road. But, you know, what are... what are the state's responsibility to the city once they're inside the city limits?
I guess historically, what happens is if we have an issue, we raise it to KDOT, explain what the concern may be related to that particular concern. For example, the traffic signal at Cedar Niles. There was never... there did not used to be a traffic signal. And we raised the issue, so we... that there needs to be a traffic signal. Well, the state comes in and they base their decisions on warrants. So they did a study and came back that that signal was not warranted for that intersection based on the volumes and so on, and all the other variables that go into that discussion. And we said, no, we felt that it was. And there were, you know, a couple of accidents that occurred. Went back to them again and said, look, you know, there's, because of the increase in population, the increase in traffic, there's a longer wait times for the people at Cedar Niles. And we believe the signal's necessary. So they agreed and installed the signal outside of the warrants. The Moonlight left turn, for example, for not... there were no warrants. We did not need warrants for the left turn signal at Moonlight. But because, again, because of the volume and when we went back and said, look, this is... We feel that the traffic count is high enough and that the accident rate was high enough that the left turn signal was warranted because people became impatient and would try. And so they installed then left turns. And obviously, now with the improvements in the light, the left turn lane is certainly warranted. So that, you know, typically, that's how the state makes their decisions. And on a state highway, we have input. And staff certainly works, you know, with KDOT. And then the governing body needs to make calls, we do. But that's... that's the way it works today. And history-wise, I couldn't tell you how, you know, how many times we've lowered the speed limit. Obviously, the flyover at New Century Parkway, the street was lowered there as well. And that was, obviously, we had a couple of accidents. We had one with bad weather and then we had the crossover, obviously, on that area. So, you know, the decision was made to lower it there.
Well, I mean, I'm just wondering if there's something that we can do as a governing body to emphasize to the people on the state level, especially Main Street from Center out to about where I would say 175th cuts off. I mean, if we could get the speed limit down starting there, by the time it's approaching the signaled intersection, you know, hopefully, people are approaching there at a safe speed. It's a residential neighborhood as well as a state highway. And it's the second busiest intersection in the city, so.
And that's what Senator Olson had sort of challenged KDOT to work with.
He asked them to do the speed studies.
Right.
And that's actually, Chris, that's actually kind of where we're headed. We'd be in favor of going to 35. What I'm telling you is, the engineering analysis alone does not justify it. Doesn't mean we can't get there.
Another question that I've got is about, you know, we've been talking about projections. But in the area plan for the Southwest Johnson County Freight District that we just entered into, you know, one of the major components of the plan is state highway planning to meet the needs of the area as growth occurs. And that includes, I suppose, studying 56, Missing Gardner altogether, using 199th Street to Homestead. I mean, if the state decided to... well, if the freight district decided to go that way, if the state decided to go that way, I mean, what's that going to do to our numbers for this intersection as far as, you know, some of those numbers that you're talking about sound mind-boggling?
One of the things that we've looked at is, is that rerouting and what would that effect be on the traffic volumes? One of the things to look at is, what's the volume on US 56 between Edgerton and Gardner? Out in the more rural section, that kind of gives you a feel for how many folks are coming into Gardner on that highway and what kind of volumes is that highway bringing to town? The rest of those volumes should be generated within Gardner and around the surrounding area. Gardner and trying to come into Gardner themselves. It's about 8,000 to 10,000 that would be taken off of Main if you rerouted US 56, based on some general projections that we've got at the moment. That would still put our 2040 volumes up around 20,000 to 22,000 cars a day coming through the intersection on Main Street.
Well, whoever's representing us on the committee, I hope that that's something that they're pushing for.
One of the... one of the designs, and that was part of the highway study that was just finished recently, was, you know, the rerouting of 56 becoming a local traffic area. And that the Main Street route would continue on 175th. So 175th would actually become the extension. And that the curve then would become a more of a local route with a roundabout at the end and up to... Yeah, so that was the... again, that's pretty far out of the planning horizon. But again, you know, they were thinking about that. And at that point, assuming we would want it, 56 would become a local road. But there's some other concerns about that discussion. You know, the bridge maintenance, obviously, on the flyovers are pretty significant. Maintenance planning burden and so on. So, I mean, those discussions, I think, would happen separately. But that is... that then would give us full control over speed, signalization, and so on.
Tim, I don't know if you've got... I'd like to think that you have at least. But what sort of accommodations and things during the planning phases and then even during the construction times are going to be made for the small business owners? Because with as much work as they're planning on doing, the amount of renovation, I don't know how traffic will be impacted. So how many cars will be diverted from the area, so diverted from Main Street? And then also, how much of the parking's going to be taken up during the construction phase? I know we're still going to have, I think it's the six spaces after it's finished. But during construction, how much parking will be taken up and not available? Because, you know, right in those two blocks, how many new businesses are there? Six to eight that are in that first two years of their life that, you know, even three months of downtime are going to be critical. And then we'll have three more empty, at least three more empty storefronts. We saw what it did with the Moonlight expansion to the businesses there that made it worth either folded or they came as close as possible. So what are we going to do, learning from those mistakes, I guess? How far have you guys gotten in that plan to learn and make accommodations? So they aren't hurt and you don't possibly even put down because...
Yeah, that's always a concern. But this is really a minor project, as far as that goes. Curb lines won't even change on the east side of Center. And widening will be three to four foot each direction west of Center. Typically, what we do, we work with individual homeowners and make sure the contractor is communicating. And if... because there are times when they drive, they'll have to be closed. And if there's an alternate means to get in. Now, luckily for most of them, I mean, we're talking to banks, they have alternate entrances already. So, I mean, we haven't got far enough along in design to have a definite answer. But, I mean, that's something that is, we always do. And, yeah, I mean, if we've got them boxed out, there has to be an alternate means for them to gain access.
And at the present time, we're not intending to remove all of the pavement out there either. It's going to be using the existing pavement in place with a millon overlay, putting new surface course, new pavement markings on it. So it's really going to be just work on the curb and gutters in the outside section and widening the existing roadway. So we should be able to carry traffic through construction during the entire operation. We should never have it shut down, which would allow access to those businesses along those streets through construction, which is sometimes challenging. But in this case, I think... But in this case, I think we can keep it open throughout construction.
And actually, I, I misspoke a little bit. When you, on this side, there will be a, a little bit of construction as, as the road curves to the south and takes out those parking spaces, we bring it back to existing center line. Well, where that happens, we'll be adding curb. The curb will be there to direct traffic back out to where it should be. So there'll be some minor construction out here as well. I don't see us, you know, we're, obviously, we're taking, the spaces we're taking will be effective. But the ones that we're not taking shouldn't see any effect during construction.
Is there been, I mean, long-term planning, any thought process going into the parking situation as a whole? I mean, if traffic counts keep going up downtown to accommodate parking, whether it's some sort of, uh, uh, other municipal lot or adding spaces, I don't know how much has gone into that just yet. But is that part of long-term planning?
That's something, well, I, I couldn't really speak to that. I mean, that's something that, it's come up a lot in our discussions with, with business owners. But, I mean, clearly, this, this project, it's not.
If I'm, if I'm beyond the scope, feel free to say reel it in.
You, you moved it into my area.
Okay.
My, my, um, you moved it into my area. And in that area, we would, we, one of the things that, um, staff eventually would like to address with the Planning Commission and Council is looking at a, a plan, um, overlay just for the downtown and that would take into account parking and, and changes in needs in the community related to the function of the downtown over time.
Okay.
So, but, but we have not done one of those. And we need to.
Okay, is it, is it in the works?
Figure comprehensive plan or you can do area plans for certain different types of things. But generally, they're all brought together and bundled up through that. As we're doing work on new projects, or Tim's doing work on new or existing areas, that we all have that to look at so that we don't do something to hurt ourselves down the line.
Absolutely. I'm interested to hear if we've got any of the local residents or business owners.
I'd like to open the floor up to residents and business owners regarding this project. So we could, and you may not go too far. You may, might have questions that you'd have to address as a result. So, uh, anyone who wishes to, uh, ask questions or make statements regarding this project, please take this opportunity to do so. Yep, Sam, come on up. If you wouldn't mind, uh, state your name and, uh.
My name's Sam Boyadjin, I own Gardner Pharmacy. And I want to thank Councilman Freeman for bringing up the issue of, you know, the, the impact on, on, uh, business owners and what it did to Moonlight. In particular, we all know what happened with Rex at the hardware store. I know that everybody here is, is talking about making sure that the business owners downtown stay viable. And that's good, I appreciate that. I want to make sure, and I'm just, it's just a comment, that, um, that this isn't just lip service, okay? I'm not saying that it is, but when you go through these plans, you know, the different, different, you know, A, B, and C and all this, keep in mind the amount of impact it's going to have on us. Because, um, my concern at the pharmacy is not only will people be able to get to my business while this is all going on, and I know that they said the impact will be minimal and traffic will still flow through. And I, I will take him at his word at that. But there will be impact, make no doubt about that, there will be. But not only during the time of construction, but also what is going to happen after this? After this is all completed, what's going to happen then? Are these, is the main goal just to get people through as quick as we can and safely? Everyone's all for that and I, I appreciate that. But is, is the main goal just to get people through town? To get to the opposite ends of town as fast as they can and as efficiently as possible? I think there's another element here that needs to be addressed. And that is making sure, I've been here in Gardner for 15 years. That's longer than most and not as long as some. But ever since I've been here, all I've ever heard is making sure that the downtown stays viable. Downtown stays viable. I've heard that, if I've heard it once, I've heard it 100 times. I think that's important. And I took people at their word at that, that the downtown stays viable as a commercial and retail segment of the, of the community. And I'd just like you all to recognize that there's a lot of us that put a big investment into the downtown and do what we can to make Gardner look the way we think and like most people think it should look. And if your main goal is just to move traffic through as quickly as possible and, you know, get people to the opposite ends, I think you're missing a bigger, a bigger issue here. So that's all I want to say and I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Sam. Yes.
My name's Teresa Smith and I own a design company. Um, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Do you guys like to see traffic walk up and down the street?
I do.
You do?
Traffic, I'm sorry, walk?
That's true.
Do you like people talking about the history of Gardner? Do you like the buildings? Do you like to see them employed, the people? If you do this, you're going to eliminate a lot of business. I really don't because I hate talking in front of people. But, um, there's no parking now. And we, we deal with that now. But somebody here has got to come up with an idea to fix it. It's not our job. Our job is to bring in business, bring in beauty, bring in talk about the downtown here. It's not my job to make sure that it get recognized. It's your guy's. So somebody needs to come up with a plan for parking because it will kill businesses. People going down the street will see empty buildings because you have the coffee shops, you have the gym, you have me, you have, um, the antique places. That's all foot traffic. They have to have a place to park. So somebody has to come up with a plan to deal with this. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Ms. May I get your address, please? 136 East Main. And your first name? Teresa, thank you.
I couldn't agree more with Teresa. I, uh, my, my, uh, former business was located right next door to hers. And, and downtown parking is a, a premium commodity. You know, I, I can't tell you how many times people would pass by the location and then call me and try and figure out someplace else to park because there wasn't any place else to park on Main Street. And I realize some of this has to happen because of, um, you know, our relationship with the, the state highway and KDOT. Uh, but we've got to do something moving forward to address parking downtown, especially if we want it to be, the, you know, vibrant.
I, I mean.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I, I was going to say, my, my concern is, I, it's easy for us to sit up here and say we need to address it. But honestly, I mean, until, I don't feel like we've had conversations or we have a good plan to address it. And, and for me, moving forward with changes like this, it are significant without that type of plan.
Okay, regarding parking, uh, this plan removes the parking in front of Metcalfe Bank, which is largely, largely not used. I mean, there's occasional pull-in, run-up, drop-off of the, of the, uh, drop-off. But it, but it's largely not used.